Baldwin, from my office, who will be providing an overview of the Police Department's proposed FY24 budget.
Right, thank you.
Good afternoon. The proposed fiscal year 2024 budget for the Police Department totals 289.2 million, an increase of 9 million or 3.2% over the fiscal year 2023 budget. As you can see on page two of the analysis, the largest portion of the department's budget, the general fund budget, totals 260.2 million and increases by 9.9 million or 4%, primarily due to increases in personnel expenses, salary enhancements over time, traffic guard raises, callback, 10 net new and five previously unfunded positions, significantly offset by an increase in turnover savings, motor pool, facilities leased, uniforms and equipment. The special fund portion of the budget totals 29 million and decreases by 897,000 or 3%, primarily due to an overall reduced level of grant funding, partially offset by new and recurring grants. On page three, the exhibit displays the department's budget history as well as the general fund reversions. The pie charts show how the program will be allocated across sworn and civilian personnel and expenditures. Personnel costs, primarily for sworn personnel, represent the largest spending allocation. On page four, the analysis notes areas within the budget that support new expenditures or reflect budget flexibility, where potential reductions could be identified if the council wanted to explore such options. Operating budget highlights, which begin on page five, include personnel and non-personnel expenses. Additional topics for discussion start on page nine and include patrol vehicles, school traffic guards, staffing challenges and recruiting initiatives, new training facilities at Stevenson University's Greenspring Campus, unmanned aircraft systems, UAS, program, special fund programs, speed camera program, and American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, funding. Capital budget highlights begin on page 19. At this time, I would like to turn it over for discussion.
Chairman Jones and members of the council, good afternoon. It is an honor to be here today on behalf of the men and women of the Baltimore County Police Department. I would like to first take a moment to recognize that we are in the National Police Memorial Week. The thoughts and prayers of our department are with the surviving family members of those officers we have lost in the line of duty, both in this county and throughout the country. Their sacrifice will never be forgotten. I would also like to take the time to pause here and to mention Ms. Nicole Glazer, who's been a member of the Baltimore County Police Department for 41 years. She's been working in our budget section that entire time. I can say that quite candidly, I was a cadet at the age of 19, working under Ms. Glazer. So that was a long time ago. But we really and truly thank her for her service, and it saddens me to think that she'll be retiring. And we hope to find someone that can be half as good as she has been in her career. So we applaud you, Nicole. I'd like to take, I'd like to thank the county executive and each member of the council for your commitment to this police department. Your work as leaders in this county is important. By making public safety a key priority, it sends the message that Baltimore County is the place to live, work, play, and do business. What we do in law enforcement and what we do here as leaders in this county is a team effort. No one, no one person or entity can do this alone. Our partnership is key in combating crime and making institutions like our educational facilities and our faith-based organizations safe. As your new police chief, my role is to make certain that we have a clear vision moving forward to ensure Baltimore County is a safer place today than it was yesterday and last year. That vision cannot be a reality without you and your continued support. So to each of you, I again say thank you. The Baltimore County Police Department faces many challenges, but none of the challenges cannot be overcome without the proper resources. There are many issues or concerns that I could discuss, but we only have time for a few. I will tell you that fighting crime is of the utmost priority. We understand that our residents want to not only feel safe, but actually be safe. Recruitment, hiring, and retention continue to be our focus as we compete to hire and retain the best talent in this region. Police reform continues to be the foremost in our minds as we work to meet all of our new mandates. And technology continues to drive our daily functions as we utilize it to modernize our policing functions. With that said, I would like to start addressing some of our budgetary items. Once again, as previously stated, our proposed FY 2024 budget for the Police Department totals 289.2 million, an increase of about $9 million or 3.2% over the FY 2023 budget, and we are grateful for the increase. Some items, just to discuss right off the bat, the 10 net new general fund positions. We had seven positions that were previously funded by ARPA for officers first class, two sergeants, and one statistical analyst for the mobile crisis team. The MCT utilizes a co-responder model for mental health crisis, allowing officers and licensed mental health clinicians to respond to behavioral health-related calls through service. The MCT has expanded to a third team on the day and evening shifts. Statistical analyst position is currently vacant. In order to avoid a financial physical cliff, the position has been included in our general fund-based budget. Next topic I would like to discuss is the unmanned aircraft systems program, UAS. There were four net FY 2023 mid-year additions, four police officer first-class positions, one FY 2023 mid-year addition of corporal, and one deletion of a UAS program administrator position. The department has an FY 2023 mid-year addition that were additions that were critical hires, leading to the deletion of the UAS program administrator position. Three of the police officer first-class positions are part of the multi-year continuation plan to increase the tactical unit by one additional squad to address new requirements for, well, this is for, I'm sorry about that. This is for the tactical, tactical unit. We're also, for our tactical unit, there's three police officer first-class positions that are a part of a multi-year continuation plan to increase the tactical unit by one additional squad to address new requirements for no-nop warrants and time restrictions for server warrants. Getting back to the UAS program, the UAS program administrative position was originally added to the department budget by the county executive in the final stages of FY 23. When the proposal was originally drafted, the salary and description was meant as a placeholder, not a specific single position. As the department attempted to move forward the UAS program, it was determined that the actual need for one corporal and one police officer to collectively administer the UAS program. The one chief operations officer was transferred to the administrative office. One vacant management analyst position assigned to the budget management, grants management team was transferred to the administrative office for the deputy county administrator officer for public safety. Delving into some potential budget reductions, the proposed new expenditures or significant increases total 3.4 million and include 1.8 million, a new initiative to raise, to raise traffic guard wages from 15 an hour to 20 to 50 an hour. This is a pilot project, and the vendor specializes in this service. This saves the police department man-hours in terms of allowing patrol officers to perform police functions. We have gone, we've gone from two to three paid hours with a minimum of three hours for the guards. We are also looking to be fair and equitable to all employees. In addition to that, there's a line item, $700,000 for helicopter maintenance for an engine overhaul that was left in the budget due to supply chain concerns. However, a new replacement helicopter is expected to be delivered in November or December 2023. So only a portion of that budget fund, budgeted funding would be needed for maintenance for existing helicopter, for an existing helicopter. There's also item of 681,000, seven previously funded ARPA positions, created in FY 22 for the mobile crisis team. For additional positions, we were able to fit these positions into the budget so that if the ARPA funding goes away, we will be able to sustain those positions. There was also 210,000 operating costs to be incurred as a result of previously ARPA-funded projects, including 178,000 for vulnerable population outreach. Motor pool, 177,000, and voice and data, 1,000. 32,000 for mobile community. I think that was the mobile community vehicle, and youth engagement, and 17,000 for fuel with that, and office and administrative supplies for 10,000, and equipment and vehicle repairs, and bikes, and some other items. Our personnel expenses totaling 236, 236.8 million reflect the 91%, reflect 91% of the general fund budget and account for 4.8 million or nearly half of the department's general fund increase for FY 24 as follows. In terms of the COLAs and salary enhancements, we are adequately funded for above that. And it should also be noted that Workday changed how we code our items for our budget. Coding in Workday is no longer, no longer department-directed, meaning that previously the department identified the object code it wanted to use. This enabled departments to match funding and expenses. In Workday, OBF has assigned spend categories to commodity codes, which means the department does not control the coding of expenses during the transition. As the department becomes familiar with the assignment of spend categories to the various expenses, there will be a mismatch of funding and expense. A good example is the range cleaning contract. It is not a new expense. We have always had a range cleaning contract. However, it was previously funded under service contracts, but is now coded to building and constructing, construction services. Likewise, body armor was historically coded to uniforms, but is now coded to equipment. We were initially instructed to fund conference costs under employee development, but saw that charges were posting to travel and therefore requested funding in that category for FY 24. Motor pool expenses have been understated for years as the size of our active fleet has shrunk due to the inability to obtain and deploy replacement vehicles. In addition, there have been a number of vehicles added to our fleet on paper, but not in actuality. Requested funding in FY 24 assumes that the fleet will be closer to its authorized numbers. We also anticipate to take, take home car, take home vehicles will increase mileage expense. The Greenspring Campus and Range trailer lease expenses are required until permanent solutions can be found for our facility needs. The increase in helicopter maintenance expenses is status quo funding for our existing fleet, meaning that in years when helicopters are due for major overhauls, we notify OBF that we will need a target number that accommodates those needs. If the replacement helicopter is delivered in the hoped, in the hoped for timeframe, we should be able to avoid the large overhaul expense. Past experience with significant delays in delivery of various items led us to include the funding and an abundance of caution. When it comes to patrol vehicles, our new community presence vehicle program, we've been allocated $7 million from the start. The department have been advised that the equipment financing package will include $7 million for approximately 100 new Ford interceptors to expand it to the, the community presence vehicle program, which was, will be launched in FY 23. The department further advised that the, the anticipated rollout timeline is heavily dependent on the automobile supplier. Right now, we're still experiencing a slowdown for vehicles and the delivery of vehicles. I think our next large delivery is expected to be sometime in October. We have established a criteria for the community presence vehicle program. That criteria is that the officers be assigned to the patrol, to the patrol division, be a county resident, agree to terms of usage as developed by the department, the Fraternal Order of Police, and complete training to ensure there's understanding of the policy. The 20 vehicles funded in the FY 23 ordered, have been ordered, but have not arrived. Estimate, like I said, the estimated delivery is October 24. An attempt to start the program while not waiting for the extended delivery date, the department has repurposed 10 vehicles, half of the pilot program's 20 for a pre-pilot program. The policy for the program is being finalized this week since the topic was a matter of bargaining with the FOP Lodge 4. The department and FOP Lodge 4 representatives have reached an agreeable policy for the community presence vehicle program. The first 10 officers from the pilot program have been selected, and we've made sure that the demographics match the department as, as best as we possibly could. Some of the metrics there being tracked for the program are the miles being driven. We're looking at departmental crashes, vehicle maintenance, and preventative maintenance. And we're also even looking at the officers, looking at crime data around the officers' houses who these vehicles are being given to in terms of being able to look to see if there's any deterrents or impact of prevention on crime as far as that's concerned. Note that these vehicles will serve the county well also in case we have any natural disasters moving forward. It will enable us to deploy our entire workforce versus being able to deploy approximately, approximately at best, a third of that workforce. And addressing the issue of our school traffic guards, there's a proposed FY 24 budget including 3.2 million for school traffic guards, an increase of 1.8 million or 128.1% over the FY 23 budget. We've done this simply because we always had a problem with hiring school crossing guards. It's become a greater problem coming out of COVID. The department has engaged in extensive efforts to improve, to improve the staffing and efficacy of the, the school crossing guard program. The restructuring of the wage and work schedule is required to adequately recruit and retain school crossing guards and to maintain parity with contractual services for the same work. Each school crossing detail ranges in time from approximately 30 to 45 minutes. Depending on the particular post, guards would offer, will often cover more than one detail in the morning and afternoon, and will travel between posts. For example, two in the morning and two in the afternoon for callouts and et cetera. In terms of the department's plan to fund the contract and using the transferring funds, a budget transfer request is currently in process, transferring funds from Programs 1502 and 1504 to Program 1507. In terms of department staffing and challenges, in terms of recruiting initiatives, the department has been facing several staffing-related challenges and is undertaking a number of initiatives to address these challenges. The department estimates carrying 271 vacancies in FY 24, 108 sworn, 163 civilian or professional staff, along with 34 cadet vacancies, an increase of 143, 61 sworn, and 82 civilian over FY 23. For FY 24, the department has budgeted 150 retirements, 130 sworn, and 20 professional staff, and an increase of 35 over FY 23 of 115, which is 95 sworn and 20 civilian. Some additional details in terms of recruitment and recruit classes. The proposed FY 24 budget includes 4.8 million. Budget is a reduction to anticipated turnover savings for six recruit classes with a total of 188 recruits as follows. There's 575,000 for August 23, lateral class of 10, 2 million for September 23, September 23, class of 42 recruits, 1.3 million for December of '23, class of 42 recruits, 250,000 for February 24, 10 lateral, 10 lateral class recruits, and 686,000 March 24, March of '24, 42 recruits, and finally 98,000 for June of '24, for 42 recruits. The bottom line is, as an agency, we have to remain competitive with our surrounding agencies. In terms of anticipated ability, the department continues to attempt to fill new additional positions as well as existing vacancies. In the first four months of 2023, police officer anticipated applications are up 10% as compared to the first four months of 2022. The total number of applications received in April of 2023 nearly doubled the amount received in April 2022. The department has completely filled all background investigator PA vacancies with employment, within the employment section. This will allow the department to handle an increase in applicants and also increase the number of overall case assignments. Some challenges that we're facing, continued nationwide decline in applicant, in applicants, increased number of retirements, increased number of resignations, and members leaving the profession and members leaving for other police departments, which is a nationwide trend. Competition with other departments and other professions for qualified applicants. In terms of hiring bonus, the impact of hiring bonus has remained positive since the inception of the program. The department utilizes the hiring bonus in multiple hiring advertisements to attract qualified candidates. These advertisements include radios, social media, billboards, and print. In terms of recruitment bonus, the impact of recruitment referral bonus continues to be positive. Current Baltimore County Police Department members at all ranks are continuously referring potential applicants to the employment section. These applicants tend to be very motivated and tend to stay invested in the process. Over the next few months, there will be a repeated push, email and in person to all department members reminding them of the recruitment bonus and also reminding them that each of them are department, are the department's best recruiters, which I'm reiterating that message constantly at every meeting, at every in-service training, that every cop is a recruiter and a part of the recruitment program. But I also would like to say to every councilperson and their staff are also recruiters too. So we need your help. So if you know somebody, please send them our way. In addition to that, when it comes to new training facilities at Stevenson University's Greenspring Campus, the proposed FY 2024 budget includes 1.2 million for the county's lease of space of Stevenson University's Greenspring Campus for the Police Department, Fire Department, and Department of Rexton Parks. The lease commenced December of '22 and provides the department access to classroom and/or training spaces, a gymnasium, limited use of the theater, and a portion of a parking lot to be used for incremental skills training. The maximum class size at that facility is 42 students per class. There, the lease, the lease language limits the primary use of the campus to recruit-level training for both the police and fire departments. The training section may host special programs. The location for class is taught by entrance-level staffs such as body-worn camera training. The scenario rooms have the potential to be used for other training above and beyond recruit-level training. The driving course being laid out on the parking lot will be used for recruit-level training and remedial training for members involved in departmental crashes and require corrective training. That's all low-risk type of driving, low-speed type of driving that will be done at that facility. The theater in the pavilion may be used for larger presentations such as guest speakers and seminars. There are some concerns at the new facility, such as we, cellphone coverage issue that, that should be addressed with FY 23 funds. Property management is pursuing a cost-sharing agreement with Stevenson. Fire Department is working on a resolution to the public safety radio coverage issue. Multiple purchases are still pending to finish outfitting the space. Modular walls for the unfinished scenario space, padding and padded furniture for scenario rooms, enclosed trailer for parking, control stores for the driving courses, cones, barricades, bars, et cetera, and also the alarm system installation. We appreciate your patience. These are just some, some comments concerning budget items. Do you have any questions? I would like to thank you.
Are any questions or comments from the members? And I would ask you all to just speak up because I don't have all the video.
Mr. Chair, Izzy Patoka.
Yes, Councilmember Patoka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Chief McCullough, I just want to say that I want to thank you for meeting with myself and I think with all of my colleagues on your appointment. We've met with your leadership team, I think individually, and it really has made for a good transfer of information and a good fresh start in terms of your leadership and your command staff. And just from the remarks that I heard you open with this afternoon, I could tell that the things that we discussed are things that you are going to implement, or at least is in your plan for implementation. So I really don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you for, for listening to us. I think, like I said, it's a great start. The other thing I will say was that the Garrison, when you talked about a council member being a recruiter for, for new, for cadets. I, I was at a Garrison Woods meeting last week, and one of the community members said, "Mr. Patoka, what are you doing to recruit police?" And so I said, "What about a $10,000 bonus?" And I said it kind of off the cuff, but I, I was curious, how does that work? Not that I'm looking for a bonus, but since I said it last week at a community meeting, I should be a little bit more informed on how that works.
Well, at best of my knowledge, the, basically, our, our members are able to, to refer a, a person to, to the agency. They could receive a referral bonus for that. But our recruits coming in the door, once they're signed up and they've completed the academy, they become eligible for that, that $10,000 bonus. I think part of it's, half of it's paid upfront, and then the other half is, I believe, paid later in the process.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Patoka. Any additional questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, it's, yeah, thank you very much. Captain McCullough, I certainly feel very good about what you had to say, and I'm very optimistic about the future. optimistic about the future of our police department, and also that we're going to be able to get those crime numbers down. I have three questions. Number one, the budget that is presented to us, how much input did you have into that since you came in later in the process?
Quite candidly, I had little to no input to it because by the time I came into the process, the budget was already in position and established, sir.
Okay. And I'm sure that next year at this time, there'll be some changes in the budget or, well, of course, during the year, you can certainly request of additional resources that you might need. My second question deals with the wellness program for officers. Did I see that the funding for that program was cut?
Well, first of all, just for additional commentary on the budget, I would say that I totally agree with the budget. So I don't see any, anything that I would add or delete to it. In terms of wellness, I'm not familiar with any fund, no, there is no funds cut for wellness. Matter of fact, there's funding there because there's also wellness and mental health requirements that we have to fulfill under the mandates from the state of Maryland in terms of dealing with our officers.
When I was reading the report last night, I thought I saw that, but I'm thinking, well, maybe there's other funds elsewhere that, so, you know, I don't know if the auditors have any comments about that. And thirdly, my third question is, you had talked about the number of positions, officers' positions that, I guess the correct term is, that you probably won't be filled this year, and positions that are non-officer, those that won't be filled this year. Is there no money in the budget for those positions that are anticipated to remain vacant during this year?
It's my understanding that the money's there. It's my intention as the chief of police to fill every vacancy that we have. So our first goal is to fill every vacancy. I think those are just projections based upon timeline and what we know historically we're able to fill and to do as an agency.
If, I don't know, the auditor that did the audit of the police department, can you just comment on the wellness program? I guess I was reading it wrong, or?
I think we just mentioned the funds that are included for the app, the Cortico app.
Okay.
Reference.
Okay. All right.
There's ninety thousand dollars between general funds and ORPA funds planned.
Oh, okay.
Nicole, if you have anything to add as well?
I'm mute myself. I think you said it correctly.
So there really are no cuts to that program?
No, sir.
No, okay. And secondly, with, if the anticipated positions remain vacant next year, then that money would revert back to the county's coffers. Could it also be used for other purposes, that things that the police department may need?
I, as the chief, in terms of combating crime, I would always, I'm going to be constantly month by month looking at our budget and looking at what's available. But as we move into the summer months and as we move to the busier time of year, we're going to have to be good, not only be good stewards of our funding, but also we have to be strategic in our utilization of our funding. So anytime that I can use our funds to better combat crime and to strategically deploy our resources, I will look to do so.
Now, the hundred cars that you're ordering for the police officers who are taking cars home, are they electric cars or what?
They're hybrid.
Okay.
It's a combination.
Right, right. Yeah, I know what hybrid is. So, okay, thank you very much, and I wish you well, and I know that each and every member of the council, if you need help or anything, don't hesitate to contact us.
Thank you, sir. We always like more money, so.
Yeah, well, I think everybody does. Except for the chairman, who's so wealthy, he doesn't know what to do with it all, but...
Lucky me.
Oh, isn't that great, though, Mr. Chairman? It is great.
Oh, it is great. It's a nice dream, at least.
Yeah, well, there's nothing wrong with dreaming, nothing.
Nothing wrong with dreaming.
Yeah. Chief, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Catch. Any additional questions? Yes, Councilman Young?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Chief McCullough, for the presentation. I wanted to give you a chance to just go through a little bit of the take home vehicle program. One, I know the pilot program is going through. Is there any feedback or anything that you got from the pilot program that you can share with us?
I have the opportunities, a weekly talk to our officers at in-service training. That's where I get the most feedback. There's great excitement for the program. There's great excitement to expand the program, and our officers can't wait to implement it and to move it along as fast as we can.
And I know you and I have had this conversation, I know also with some of the captains about anticipation of implementing the take home program, so just want to make sure I'm wrapping my, to the seven million, it was, Councilmember Catch also referenced the hundred new vehicles. All hundred of those vehicles are specifically for the program? Sorry, I have a firehouse behind me, one second.
I couldn't quite hear you, but yes, all the additional vehicles, as we purchase them, we will be looking to use a large portion of them to put into the take home car program, but we also have to have enough vehicles to also sustain our current fleet also.
Understood. I was just confirming that the hundred new Ford interceptors, not all of them are going to the pilot program. A portion of them will be towards the take home program, but not a hundred vehicles.
Yes.
Just.
Yes.
Okay. Understood. And obviously, we're going to keep taking a look, we'll keep talking over the next couple fiscal cycles on expanding the program. So right now, it looks like there are twenty vehicles in line to be utilized for the take home program?
Yes, that's the initial pilot program, but of course, we'll always be looking to expand that.
Understood. I appreciate that clarification. Also, in sharing my colleague's concern related to vacancies, and I know you are, we had multiple conversations about this, I know that's a concern for you, and it's been a concern across the country, just wanted to kind of get your feel or an opportunity to kind of tell us with the budget that you've been presented with, and we've been presented with, challenges you're seeing. They're having vacancies, recruit classes have been down, it's mentioned that it's going to continue to potentially be down, and with improvements, are we going to be able to meet our, meet our numbers with attrition, with folks that are leaving, but with recruit classes coming in? How are you seeing the next twelve months of improvement and trying to fill those vacancies, knowing that we consistently have been, you know, losing folks for other reasons, but also just trying to fill these vacancies?
I'm very optimistic. I think that we're seeing a point where we're leveling off in terms of people leaving the agency. We, of course, will maybe, you know, lose a few people that already had slated, were slated to retire, but I think we've reached a plateau where we're going to see a start, where we'll start to climb back up in terms of our numbers. I think we have the organization turned around, we have our people excited and enthused about recruiting again. Like I always say, that our people are our greatest recruiters, and I think we have our people back in the mindset and back in the attitude of positivity, where we're all looking forward to trying to recruit and bring new people in the door. So I'm anticipating and I'm hopeful that not only will we achieve our goals, I'm hoping that we will exceed our goals.
Understood. And I think my colleagues are committed to help you reaching that. I want to dive in real quick. When we think of vacancies, we're thinking generally from a, when you think about the police department, think about vacancies, you start to think about sworn officers, but obviously you have civilian employees as well. And I notice you have one position filled of six forensic service technicians. I would ask, I know that you have experienced with the department before now, is, how long has it, we've only, how long have we only had one forensic service technician position filled out of six? Is this consistent?
Well, I think the real challenge there is the salary itself, you know? When you talk about those jobs in the forensic area, people can go to the private sector and make much more than they can make in government. So that's always a challenge. I know we've been looking to increase the salary, and we've done some creative things to be able to attract more people. I know that we have some people in the hiring process, so we're always actively seeking to hire people, and we're trying to land the best talent that we can.
No, that's mine. Appreciate bringing up the salary. Thank you to Madam Cao and her staff for the work that they did to, one, modernize our salary structure related to positions across the county. And I see she has her hand raised, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let you know that's...
Thank you so much. Madam Ayo?
Thank you, sir. And councilmembers, I had two comments. One goes back to Councilmember Catch's question regarding salary, well, regarding funding and use of funding throughout the year. And Chief McCullough, absolutely, we work with the departments throughout the year, monitoring spend down, and definitely have the opportunity, as we go throughout a fiscal year, to look at what your needs are, emerging needs and changing needs. With respect to the forensic biologist positions, this has been a challenging position for the staff. We actually have our contractor, PRM, that's doing our overall classic compensation study to do specific benchmarking on that particular classification, so that we can do the requested upgrades that the police department has asked that the administration do. The other thing is that there were more forensic biologists onboard earlier in the year. All of the positions were filled, but we were able to negotiate and help to give them at least some relief in terms of amount of hours they are working to clear the backlog that the department has by seeking modification to that position, being able to receive overtime. There are positions in the department and across the enterprise that have historically been overtime restricted, and we wanted to help the police department and help compensate these individuals, so we were able to make that available. So we're doing everything we can to assist the department with that classification area.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify.
Yes, go right ahead.
All six forensic service technicians were filled earlier this year?
I can't say that they were all filled, but I know we were working with the department to get the forensic biologists who were onboard to be able to receive overtime, and there was more than one.
Gotcha. No, I appreciate the clarification. And Chief, just wanted to, you know, from myself and from the other members, we're willing to work any way we can to help with your recruitment issues and also to be steward of the department and ambassadors to connect folks to end your recruiting staff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chairman, it's Wade again.
Councilmember Catch, go right ahead.
Yeah, Councilman Young, I just wanted you to know that
People's in background.
One of your predecessors, Bertie Manley, was quite an advocate for the taking cars home, and she had a study done, or the county had a study done, and I'm so happy that this administration took a look at that study and the advantages to the take home program.
Outstanding. Thanks for the history lesson, and looking forward to the opportunity to make sure we modernize the program now.
Yep, and if you could, you know, if you see her, thank her.
Councilman Young, if I could refer back to your question, sir, also I've been informed that we now have two of those positions filled, and we have several in background.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilmember Marks?
Thank you very much. I won't be long, because I know we're late, but Chief McCullough, you are doing a phenomenal job. Your presentation was outstanding. You answered questions posed by the auditors. You're just doing a terrific job, and whatever you need, please let us know. I have one question. You know, we're all focusing on this need to replenish the police force. How do you balance the need to replenish, say, patrol officers versus giving them the opportunity to be hired in specialized positions, tactical units, detectives, and so on? Because it seems to me that that's a powerful morale booster.
Well, the one thing I could say, even with the vacancies that we've had, we've still been able to fill positions and our specialized units. Another thing that we've always done as an agency, and we continue to do, and we encourage our employees, and I even talk about it when I go to in-service training, I still encourage our employees to reach out to the specialized units that they have interest in, and to, you know, try to schedule themselves to go work with those units, and also talk to their commanders about making sure that we make time for them to be able to go and work with those specialized units, because that's the only way they gain that specialized knowledge and make those connections and make relationships with people in those units, so that they can develop those opportunities to go to the specialized units.
Great, absolutely. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks, any additional questions or comments from the members?
Council, I had one quick follow-up. Councilman Catch, when you had asked your question regarding the wellness program, were you looking at the appendix A, where it's showing a decrease in the one grant program? Maybe that's what you were alluding to?
Okay, that could be it. I don't have, I'm at the doctor's office, so I don't have the, what I read last night with me.
Okay. Well, it appears based on that, there were some additional funds that came in, maybe one-time funds in fiscal year twenty three, that could cause it to appear that it's showing a decrease. I think the department had acknowledged that there was not a decrease, so, and maybe they similarly have the app, a wellness app. I know it was the fire department that has a wellness app. So just to clarify your question.
I thank you very much, because I, you know, being a police officer, especially the last couple of years, has been very stressful, and, you know, I think that it's important that we offer this kind of assistance. So thank you very much for the information.
Thank you, Councilmember Catch. Any additional questions or comments from the members? All right, well, thank you very much, Chief McCullough. As always, a pleasure seeing you. Seems like everyone is very satisfied with the progress we're making thus far, and I look forward to further conversations with you. All right. You're welcome. Lauren?
All righty, moving on to the Community College of Baltimore County.
Yes.
Okay. I would like to introduce Raven Vincent from my office, who will be giving the overview of the college's FY twenty four budget.
Good afternoon, everyone. The proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four budget for CCBC totals two hundred and eighty eight... The proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget for C C B C totals two hundred and eighty-three point seven million dollars, a decrease of thirteen million dollars or four point four percent from the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget as appro as adopted. The proposed portion of the budget to be appropriated from the county's general fund totals eighty-four point two million dollars, an increase of six point two million dollars or eight percent, primarily due to personnel expenses for existing staff, including the cola and salary steps and increments. The special fund portion of the budget, which the council is asked to authorize as county, non-county expenditures, totals one hundred and ninety-nine point four million dollars, a decrease of nineteen point two million dollars or eight point eight percent, primarily due to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three appropriation of COVID-nineteen pandemic-related federal grant funding. The total budget does not include one million dollars in American Rescue Plan funds that C C B C and the Office of Budget and Finance have stated will be needed to support an expansion of the College Promise Program, nor does it include six hundred and ten thousand dollars from the Enterprise Fund over which the county does not have appropriation authority. On pages three and four, the pie chart shows how C C B C's proposed budget will be allocated and the sources and shares of each revenue stream. As seen on exhibit three, the county's portion, shown in red, accounts for nearly a third of the budget. On page five, the analysis notes that the budget is five point seven million dollars greater than the maintenance of effort amount. However, our analysis has found that the proposed additional county and state funding totaling fifteen point eight million dollars is insufficient to fund all announced new and continued costs, including colas in the expanded College Promise Program. And it is not yet clear how all initiatives will be sustained in future budget years. So the analysis does not identify specific potential reductions for consideration. Beginning at the bottom of page five, the operating budget highlights section analyzes the drivers of the changes within the general and special funds. Several efforts to expand college and workforce training program access are detailed on pages five through ten. First is the aforementioned College Promise Program expansion, followed by workforce development initiatives in partnership with the Department of Economic and Workforce Development and the early college high schools and access programs. Beginning on page ten is where we first present C C B C's enrollment trajectories and the impact of enrollment on tuition fees and revenue, especially as C C B C intends to continue its freeze of tuition rates for in-county students. Beginning on page sixteen, we review vacancies and C C B C's hiring efforts, which have also been impacted by declining enrollment. Other discussion topics follow in the budget package beginning on page seventeen include enhanced state aid, the rainy day fund, federal ARPA grant funding, and capital projects. At this time, I would like to turn it over for discussion.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Uh, Dr. Kurt Dinitis.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Well, we're very happy to to be here with you. And uh, let me just frame our part of the conversation a little bit, almost since the beginning of this year. And certainly those of you who came to our January legislative luncheon have heard us say with vision, with strength. With vision and strength. And I really appreciate that, once again, the county auditors, by focusing as they have on these challenging elements of our budget, they actually have given us a really very good opportunity to respond with uh the kind of substantive fleshing out of how we in fact expect to live this really aggressive agenda. But before we go too far into this, I do want to say, sitting next to me is our board chair, uh J D Urbach. And Chair Urbach, would you perhaps like to make a few opening comments?
Well, thank you, Dr. Kurt Dinitis. I just wanted to say, Chairman Jones, member of the county council, that I'm here on behalf of the trustees of the Community College of Baltimore County to lend our full-throated support to uh the budget that has been placed before you. We're very excited, uh as you know, to have approved a budget that uh with no no in-county tuition increase for the fifth year in a row. And we are particularly excited about the being on the verge of nearly universal community college for Baltimore County residents. We think it's a momentous occasion and uh really to a member, uh the trustees are particularly excited for this particular new era, I'll say, of uh the Community College of Baltimore County. So thank you, Dr. Kurt Dinitis. Thank you, Vice President Hop, for all you do, and uh thank you to the members of the county council.
And so Vice President Hop is here with me. She's going to answer any of the hard questions. But let me just say a few more framing uh comments. This is, this has been a a pretty fabulous year for the Community College of Baltimore County. And one of the the ways that we are moving forward is under these three premises of reframing the conversation. We're not looking back at who we were in twenty twenty of March, uh March of twenty twenty and expecting to pick up from there. We also are using our increased budgets to invest in our future. And those comments of in the responses to the auditor's questions, you will see that very clearly. And the third, and I think this is extremely important to us, it has always been a part of our uh our mission and our way of doing business, and that is leading with equity. And so some of the ways that uh we have managed to do this, I think, and are will are going to be able to manage even more to do this, are pretty striking. The board chair just mentioned that this is the fifth year in a row we will not have uh raised tuition for in-county students. And you know that uh you've heard us say many times, eighty-five percent of our students come from the economically vulnerable areas. So this is a very strong statement on the part of our board of just affirming this whole notion of leading with equity. But I did want to mention that uh we also, our faculty have reduced the costs of books by at least fifty percent by using open educational resources and other matters. We have faculty and staff working across the whole institution that are building upon the uh the initiatives that the auditors have asked us to tell more about, and all of those are part of our growth plan. But as the chair mentioned a moment ago, that one of the most exciting things that has happened for us in partnership first with the county executive and we hope in partnership with the council is our ability now through the Baltimore County Promise Scholarship uh as a last dollar in program to be able to, as the chair said, offer nearly universal College Promise Scholarships to every household in Baltimore County that makes a hundred fifty thousand dollars or less. And that means that anybody from eight to eighty or eight to ninety.
And beyond.
Can and beyond can come to the Community College of Baltimore County uh tuition free. This is really amazing. And then we added to that the achievements we were able to make at the the Maryland state level. The Maryland College Promise is being significantly broadened in its application as well, although most of that won't happen until next year. And on top of that, we have received full paid funding. So we are actually in a position like we have not been in the eighteen years that I have been here as the college president. And it feels really good, I have to say, it feels really good to be able to talk with you now about some of the amazing initiatives that we are able to roll out, not only for enrollment growth, which of course is important to us and to our well-being, but really every one of these initiatives will translate into better opportunity for the students that we serve. So perhaps I'll just stop there and open up uh the discussion to questions from the council, and we would be very pleased to answer those questions.
Thank you, Dr. Kurt Dinitis. Any questions or comments from the members?
This.
Well.
Mr. Chairman, it's Wade.
Councilman Catch.
Yeah, hi, uh, Dr. Kurt Dinitis, it's uh good to to hear you again. And uh uh we appreciate so much the job you've done uh with our community colleges in Baltimore County. Uh, one thing that I I I just want to ask a question in general about uh the workforce development, about our uh Baltimore County Public School System, about the fact that uh, you know, many uh people, many uh young adults graduating from high school don't really want to go to college. They want to become, you know, electricians or plumbers or whatever. Uh, do you, is is our county, uh, what are we doing to uh make sure that we identify those uh students or graduated students who are not interested in academics, but more interested in the service industry? I just mentioned plumbing and electrical work, et cetera. What what are we doing to try to? And give them the uh services that uh would be really beneficial to them?
Yes, well, uh, thank you for that question because the reality is each year now, we've been serving roughly forty-eight to forty-nine thousand, fifty, fifty thousand students. And interestingly enough, slightly more than half of those students are in our short-term workforce credential programs offered through our continuing education, the School of Continuing Education. And so all of those what are being referred to lately as trade school.
Right.
Uh, opportunity, we we offer all of those things. I think at this point, I have about a hundred thirty-six uh short-term workforce credentials, and that does include the trades, plumbing, uh carpentry, welding, you name it. Uh, the Community College of Baltimore County does it. But here's the other, I think, really important relationship that has been built now with the full implementation of the blueprint for education. And that is that we are watching a steadily increasing growth of high school students who are taking college courses. And that is both on the trade side and on the sort of the general education side. So students who are preparing both to enter a a the workplace uh for as when they graduate from high school and students who are hoping to enter either our college or some other college. So the the relationship with the the Baltimore County Public Schools has grown to the point that this past year, this year that we're in right now, we have about thirty-three hundred enrollments of high school students who are taking college courses. And some of these students will finish their associate's degree and their diploma by the time they are ready to graduate. And again, that is in both the work, the specifically targeted workplace, uh trade-oriented programming, as well as the the college program. I mean, in fact, this. For our commencement, we'll actually feature ten, there are ten high seniors who are also receiving, they're graduating with their diploma and receiving their uh their uh associate's degree. And the the wonderful thing is that at least, maybe most of them will be moving right on into junior status at the four-year university or they will be moving right on into the workplace with the certifications that have already. It's just a nation of, almost through the whole P through twenty continuum. And there we sit, right in the middle of that, making things happen.
Do you uh visit uh high schools, uh public and private, all over the county uh to let uh the students know about the availability of these programs and the availability of the program uh that uh, you know, you're you're not paying to for your college and, you know, for your families that are uh have less income. Are you aggressively going into all the high schools is what I'm asking?
Let me clarify by saying yes.
Yes, okay.
High schools, but I will have to admit that the private high schools are just a bit snooty.
Oh, oh.
A few, uh, Boss Yak, this one, and also the, you know, we have one partner in the uh the the ten or so of the of the Catholic high schools. But we are not necessarily welcome at those sites, although in the end, many of their graduates will come to C C B C and we are happy to have them.
Well, I don't understand why any high school uh would be uh you know, reluctant to have you all come in and present what it is you have to offer. But uh, you know, well, not, well, that that's my only comment there because you are great, you have, you provide a great opportunity. You know, our our public schools don't have the uh uh facilities to really uh work with these stu many students on the various non-academic professions. So uh, so anyhow, I uh, you know, if um I'm sure that uh members of the council who represent the districts where these schools are located would be more than happy to contact the uh uh the 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 principal or administrator of the schools that are reluctant. Uh, had they actually witnessed your, one of your presentations or not?
We've tried.
You've tried.
Have, you know, have presentation will. We're, we're always trying.
Yeah.
Um, observation I would make, as I have heard now for the past one, two, three years, conversations about the county uh considering a trade school. And I would say to you, already in our midst, there is a trade school. If if you actually stop and look at all of the options that the Community College offers in those workforce dimensions, you would be very. Between the school and the high school graduate and the entering student at C C B C is really quite amazing. And when more than fifty percent of our students are actually enrolled in these short-term credentials, you know your investment in us and your confidence in us is well-placed.
And you have the flexibility, uh should you have a dramatic increase in the number of uh individuals that uh want to involve themselves in these short-term programs, you have the flexibility to move around to accommodate them.
Do, and that's what makes the expansion of both the Maryland Promise and the Baltimore County Promise so wonderful because students who are full-time or part-time and students who want to work on a degree or a workplace certification are now, in this coming year, all eligible to receive support, last dollar in support from the Baltimore County Pro uh College uh Promise Funds.
Fund.
That will be augmented by the Maryland College.
Well, again, if there's anything any of us can do, you know that we're more than willing to do it, including contacting uh schools that are, well, hard-headed. Does that sound right? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Catch. Uh, any additional questions or comments from the members?
Chair, I had a quick item.
Go ahead, Councilman Ortell.
I just wanted to say hi to my friends at C C B C, um, Dr. Kurt Dinitis and J D and and um Melissa Hop. Um, I was a trustee there for eight years, and I think we all know on the council that C C B C is is really our institution, one of our institutions where the rubber hits the road. Um, and and I would say we need you more than ever at C C B C because um we have a lot more people that are um experiencing poverty and seem to be trapped in that um in that realm. And C C B C is really, you know, one of our most important institutions. And CCBC is really, you know, one of our most important institutions in helping moving citizens up the economic ladder. We've also seen a dramatic decrease in test scores at the high school levels, at our county high schools. And frankly, I'm, I'm very concerned that if this continues to trend that way, we, we are going to continue to march down a path where we have a lot of people that are in poverty and staying in poverty. So your, your mission is more important than ever now to try to, you know, kind of be that second chance a lot of times for, for people that didn't get the skills they needed in high school or the direction or, or even know what path they might need to walk down. So I just wanted to bring that up because we're, we're going to have to touch people, you know, in new ways to make sure that we're, we're helping people, you know, live dignified lives and become productive citizens.
Well, thank you. That's very well said, Councilman Urteau. That has a nice ring to it. And we know you, as you know us intimately in terms of the work that gets done every single day at the, at the Community College of Baltimore County. And it's quite marvelous actually to have, have you there now as someone who really does see us from the inside out. So thank you for this.
I still slip and call him T. Urteau, so I hope you don't mind. I apologize. Well, thank you. Hopefully I'll learn to turn off my mute button in the future for other.
Dr. Kurt Nidus, it's Wade again, just to follow up on Councilman Urteau. That's what I had in mind when I was asking my questions about outreach because I think it's, again, as, as Councilman Urteau said, you know, we, with academic scores falling, falling and performance falling, that, you know, we don't want our, our children, young people to end up in poverty. And so that's why it's so important that your outreach to let them know what is available there and that all is not lost is just vital. So I, I thank Councilman Urteau and thank you for talking about this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ketch. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair, one quick question, Councilman Petoka.
Go ahead, Councilman Petoka.
Okay. Dr. Kurt Nidus, on the Baltimore Promise Initiative, is it the, if a student is over eighteen years old, is it the parent's income or the student's income? Or does it depend where the student lives that would allow that student to qualify?
It's the family income, but Melissa, you probably know that.
It depends on whether or not the student is a dependent or not of their parents. And you know, sometimes eighteen-year-olds quickly become independent and then it would be based on their income. And when I say dependent, I mean, you know, if their parents still claim them as a dependent on their tax return, then it is the family income.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Petoka. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Well, Dr. Kurt Nidus, we certainly thank you and your team for joining us today. As always, it's a pleasure seeing you and you continue to do a wonderful job, you and your team. And we know that the Community College is out there changing lives and giving people opportunities. And we know it is one of our best investments in terms of helping people lead a fulfilling and rewarding life and providing to the local economy by way of providing for themselves and their families with increased wages. So we certainly appreciate you. You'd like, again, again, you're one of our best investments. So thank you very much.
Be in Baltimore County. Thank you very much.
You're more than welcome. Lauren, let's move on to the Department of Public Works and Transportation.
For our final hearing today, I have Lisa Kispert from my office, who will be giving the overview of the department's budget. Good afternoon, everyone. The proposed FY24 budget for the Department of Public Works and Transportation totals one hundred fifty-one point nine million, an increase of six point one million or four point two percent over the FY23 budget, excluding three hundred fifty-four point eight million in the Metropolitan District Enterprise Fund, which the council does not appropriate. As you can see on pages one and two of the analysis, the department's general fund budget totals one hundred thirty-five point three million and increases by six point two million or four point eight percent, primarily due to increases in service contracts such as refuse collection, refuse disposal, and snow removal, utilities for electrical charges, repairs to streetlights, offset by an overall decrease in personnel expenses for increased turnover savings, decreased salaries due to retirements and attrition of higher-paid staff, partially offset by an increase for salary enhancements, including colas. The special fund portion of the budget totals sixteen point five million, a slight decrease of one hundred forty-nine thousand. On page three, the exhibit displays the department's budget history as well as the general fund reversions. The pie charts show how the proposed funding will be allocated across bureaus and, and types of expenditures. The Bureau of Solid Waste Management represents the largest program allocation, while contracts and services represent the largest category of expenditures. On page four, the analysis notes the areas within the budget that support new expenditures, reflect budget flexibility, or lack detailed justification as part of the budget submittal process. For these items, potential reductions could be identified if the council wanted to explore such options. Operating budget highlights, which begin on page five, include non-personnel expenses, personnel expenses, new programs within the Bureau of Engineering and Construction, county rides, staffing challenges, disposal, the bulk material collection program, vehicle height monitoring system, and the Hartford County Transfer and Disposal Special Fund. Capital budget highlights begin on page thirteen. At this time, I would like to turn it over for discussion.
Any questions or comments from the members? Yes, Mrs. Walker, Director Walker, you're up. Last but certainly not least, good to see you.
Hello, Chairman and members of the council. It's my honor to come before you today as the Director of Public Works and Transportation to present our proposed budget for our upcoming fiscal year. As we gather here, our department is experiencing an exciting period of growth and transformation, expanding our horizons and setting ambitious goals for the future. Before I go too much further, I want to make sure that I thank the county executive for his support of this operating and capital budget, as well as Madam Ayo and the Budget Department, who was very diligent in helping us to pull this together. Over the past year, we've been fortunate to welcome numerous talented professionals to our ranks, including several individuals at the managerial level. This influx of fresh perspectives and new ideas have enriched our department, enabling us to better serve the community and address the unique challenges we face every day. We also have our employees that have been here for many years that are dedicated to adding to the fabric of this agency. I would be remiss if I didn't mention to you all one of our longest-serving employees of forty years. Unfortunately, we lost him just last week. He was vital in helping me pull together remarks just as this. And I would again be remiss if I didn't mention that we'll mention, that we will miss him. He was forty years of service here in Baltimore County in Department of Public Works and Transportation for all of those forty years, Dave Fittler. So as a department, our function includes but is not limited to water, sewers, storm drains, monitoring industry wastewater, repave and roll, snow removal, traffic engineering, transportation services, trash collection, recycling and water diversion, as well as engineering. Our team, as you notice in the budget and analysis, consists of over eight hundred and thirty dedicated employees, making DPWNT one of the largest departments here within Baltimore County. This workforce shows our commitment and dedication to enhancing our capacity to deliver essential public, public works and transportation services to our community. Our mission is to build a better Baltimore County through strategic public works and transportation investments, sustainable practices, and exceptional customer service. As we continue to push forward and adapt to our evolving needs of our county, we are constantly reminded of our purpose and our promise to you, the residents of Baltimore County. DPW has a number of notable achievements in the past year. One of these achievements is the implementation of the entry-level ELD training program. The ELD program focuses on training new employees in accordance with the Federal Commercial Driver's License Regulations, providing them with the necessary skills and knowledge to obtain their CDL. As part of the training program, our employees undergo testing and evaluation in DPW's newly established computer lab. The state-of-the-art facility is conveniently situated at the Nike site, offering a modern, well-equipped environment for employees to demonstrate their proficiency in CDL-related tasks. As you all may have noticed, we asked the county executive for an additional two hundred thousand dollars in our upcoming budget to help us facilitate this training of CDL drivers. As you know, CDL drivers is the backbone of what we do here in DPWNT, from our circulator program to our highways guys that drive the trucks every day. So we felt it vitally important to bring a CDL program within DPWNT so that we can recruit more employees to work here in DPWNT. In our Metropolitan District Financing, we completed a full review of billing methodology for our metro charge bill on the annual property taxes. This review included but was not limited to a cost of service analysis, a financial impact analysis and benchmarking industry standards, and development of implementation plans and schedules, and a customer impact analysis. In transportation, we are working on the final details of our bike pedestrian master plan. The plan will provide an update to the eastern and western pedestrian and bicycle access plans that were developed fifteen years ago. Enhancing bicycling and walking, walking in the region will continue to the, will contribute to the local economy, promote active lifestyles, and grow regional tourism. The key elements of the plan's process includes identifying policies and physical barriers to complete streets and active transportation services, as well as analyzing and developing physical alternatives and prioritizing improvements to be implemented here in our county. In utilities, the pumping division has begun doing preventive maintenance work on equipment that previously was sent to a vendor for maintenance. Not only can we perform the work at a reduced cost now, we also are no longer paying shipping costs for very heavy pieces of equipment. In some cases, the cost to ship to the equipment is almost as costly as the maintenance being performed. Eight thousand of the eighteen, eighteen thousand maintenance bill was shipped. Additional training is being planned so that our personnel can do more of these types of maintenance projects. The Engineering and Regulation Division started a grease interception inspection program to mitigate the amount of grease that's entering the sewer system from restaurants. These inspections ensure that restaurants are properly maintaining their outdoor grease abatement devices, with less grease making it into the county's portion of our sewer system from restaurants. The likelihood of grease related sewer overflow is decreased. The Bureau of Solid Waste began this fiscal year by conducting the county's first comprehensive waste audit. This waste characterization study was conducted in July of twenty, twenty twenty-two and allowed the county to see exactly what is present in our trash. We gained valuable insight into the characteristics of our municipal solid waste, allowing us to make informed decisions about the need for improved recycling.
Look at that.
Organics. And renewed emphasis on diversion efforts. While these large-scale projects tick away in the background, the bureau has pulled off a number of important events and efforts, including the relaunch of our Litter Blitz campaign in April of twenty twenty-three, and a highly successful compost bin sale in which fifteen hundred compost bins and rain barrels were sold to the Baltimore County residents. In November of twenty twenty-two, we launched our first trash cart pilot, providing carts to forty-three hundred residents in the Essex area. This pilot is the first step in establishing more consistent MSW collection practices countywide to reduce litter and streamline our collection services. The bureau is looking to the future and striving to advance our solid waste operations and establish invest practices for years to come. One of our most notable projects is the revaluation of our commercial solid waste services. The department is moving ahead with plans to rebid our commercial municipal solid waste services to establish better oversight of our transfer operations and provide a more consistent service to our constituents. We have also put a greater emphasis on transferring municipal solid waste away from our eastern sanitary landfill in order to, to preserve our landfill space for our Baltimore County residents. At the same time, we're working hard to establish the county's first ever food scrap pilot program slated to be launched in FY24. This project will establish baseline practices for diverting food scraps away from our landfills and toward more beneficial use. Now, let's take a look at each department's capital items and projects, starting with our sewer infrastructure. The largest DPW capital requirement is our sanitary sewer system. There are two thousand two hundred sixty miles of county-owned maintained sewer lines and a hundred and twenty pumping stations and force mains that move sewage throughout the system until the wastewater is eventually treated at the Baltimore City-owned treatment plants. The sanitary sewer capital program includes projects for pipeline and manhole rehabilitation, new pipeline installations, and upgrades to our current pumping stations. Over the past fifteen years, DPWNT has completed improvements to a hundred and seven sewage pumping stations. These projects include safety improvements, upgrades to electrical and mechanical systems, and increasing station capacity to accommodate current and future flows. In conjunction with the pumping station upgrades, the downstream force mains have been assessed and replaced or repaired to the, to extend the system life. Two such force mains are the Corsica Road Force Main and the Texas Force Main, which are currently under construction at a cost of four point five million and five point seven million for Texas. Our pipeline rehabilitation replacement projects address our aging infrastructure and extend useful life of these assets. Relining pipes and manholes is a cost-effective trenchless option that minimizes impacts to residents and provides systems improvements without the higher cost of disruption of traditional pipeline excavation and replacement. Rehabilitation projects also assist in our efforts to address capacity issues by preventing additional rainfall and groundwater from entering the sewer system. Over two hundred miles of sewer pipeline have been rehabilitated since two thousand and five. DPW continues to move forward with these projects and performance assessments that are required to meet the EPA consent decree. As DPW is approaching the completion of our consent decree requirements, we are moving towards an asset management model, which will utilize a scoring system based on inspection data, maintenance history, and capacity modeling to prioritize future rehabilitation and replacement projects. This approach will provide the county with a sustainable framework to maximize the impact of our sanitary sewer capital funds as we continue maintaining and improving our sewer infrastructure. While the sewer infrastructure is critical to manage our waste, let's now shift our focus to water infrastructure, the lifeline, ensuring that the availability of clean and safe water to our communities. The Baltimore Metropolitan Distribution System is one of the most complex systems in the United States. This is not only due to its size, but also due to the large number of zones of service, which are established to serve areas of significantly different elevations. At present, there are thirteen distinct zones of service. They are linked together by a series of pumping stations and water mains, storage reservoirs, and elevated water towers. While Baltimore City owns and maintains the water system, Baltimore County is responsible for the installation and the replacement and the rehabilitation of over two hundred and twenty, two thousand two hundred miles of water main pipes within the county's limits. At around sixty-four percent of the water system is mostly comprised At around 64% of the water system is mostly comprised of cast iron pipes that become brittle with age, leading to water main breaks. Pipeline replacement issues increase volumes, builds redundancy in the system through looping, and improves our water quality. That's why it's so important for us to have the funding to do those replacement projects. DPWNT has an aggressive pipeline replacement program with improved ductile iron pipe. This helps us keep up with the large aging system, and it should be noted that we're on track to exceed our pipeline replacement goal of eight miles in FY '24. Two examples of that work specifically in the Fox Chapel community. We found out six months ago that we were experiencing sinkholes, several sinkholes at a time. DPWNT got right on it, and we will be replacing several miles of main that date back to the 1950s and the 1960s. And the work is beginning to replace an additional approximately two miles of pipeline in the Miller's Island area this summer. DPWNT also performs comprehensive inspections on the 20 elevated water towers that you see here in the county. We do that on a six-year cycle to ensure the facilities are secure and in proper working order. These inspections provide us with detailed information to determine when tanks should be taken offline for routine cleaning and for future rehabilitation projects. Efforts are underway for the inspection rehabilitation and painting of the elevated water tower in our Sparks area. This project in the FY '24 budget is funded at $6.5 million. DPWNT also designs and manages pumping stations and rehabilitation projects in the county. Some of those rehabilitation projects with our pumping stations are in Towson, Catansville, and the Sparks area. That funding is also in our FY '22 budget at $15 million. Now, having talked about all of these complexities of water management, let's transition to our robust network that connects us all, our roads. Our Bureau of Highways is responsible for the maintenance of approximately 8,800 roads, which consist of 2,800 miles and 6,700 lane miles within the county limits. Paving. Our goal here at DPWNT is to resurface 120 lane miles per construction season, which runs from March through December. We have a yearly fiscal budget of about $11.5 million to attain this goal. Our mission is to achieve this goal while resurfacing and maintaining a safe roadway for the traveling public of Baltimore County. On average, it's important to note that the price to resurface a lane mile is $130,000. Concrete and ADA. We have a yearly fiscal budget of $4.2 million to repair and upgrade our curb gutters and ADA ramps here within Baltimore County. The curb and gutter and ADA ramps are inspected and all upgrades are performed before resurfacing is scheduled. It's important to note, the cost to upgrade one ADA ramp is $3,000, and the average cost to do a lane mile of curb gutter is $325,000. With a clear understanding of our rural system, let's navigate toward storm drain design and how we safeguard our county against the adverse effects of severe weather conditions. The team responsible for designing storm drains is tasked with managing stormwater as unchecked stormwater can lead to issues like flooding, erosion, and water pollution. Without proper control measures, stormwater can cause extensive harm, resulting in property and infrastructure damage imposing serious risks to both the environment and human health. The county's maintained storm drain system consists of approximately 1,500 miles of storm drain pipe, 53,000 roadside inlets, 33,000 manhole structures, and 33,000 storm drain outfalls. Now, armed with a capital program of $8 million biannually, the team tackles many road flooding projects, such as the elimination of road flooding in the Old Lutherville community to include but not only a road in front of the Lutherville Fire Station area in Morris Avenue. Additionally, the team provided drainage improvements to homes on and behind West Lynnmore Drive in the Parkville area, which have experienced yard flooding conditions. In lowline Miller's Island, the team is also developing plans to eliminate road and tidal flooding at the intersection of Baylight and Chesapeake Drives. We also have money in our capital budget this year to help us complete that project. The DPWNT has budgeted $1 million per biannual cycle to repair roadside inlets in need of repair due to excessive use that they receive from the impact of vehicles. For managing the storm waters beneath us, let's now look upwards and onwards at the connectivity, our bridges. Over the last year, it's important to note DPWNT completed or nearly completed wood rehabilitation to bridge projects on Wise Avenue, Sherborne Road, and Oak Court Road. There are several bridge replacement projects planned to be advertised in FY '24, including Hammond's Ferry, Woodhome Avenue, Double Rock Access Roads, and Morris Lane. Morris Lane has been on the books for 15 years. Ongoing design efforts of other major structures will continue this year and include bridges along the Peninsula Expressway, Rossville Boulevard, and Golden Ring Road, as well as Dogwood Road. The department's bridge inspection program has more than 700 structures in its inventory. Over the past year, we oversaw annual and biannual inspections of approximately 300 structures. These inspections are critical for maximizing service life and, more importantly, the safety of the traveling public. The county's share of the cost for these inspections is in excess of $2 million. There are five minor structures that have been deemed a high priority for rehabilitation and replacement that will undergo formal design efforts this year. They are ineligible for federal funding, and the cost of these improvements are anticipated to be between $2 million and $3 million. Also, over the next year, the bureau will continue adding existing county-owned retaining walls to our inspection program. We need to do this in order to maximize the useful life and the overall safety of these structures. So we'll move to our traffic calming program. You all know, in our traffic calming program, we have constructed approximately 380 projects over the last 20 years of existence in our traffic calming program. And as you all know, we get requests on the regular for the traffic calming program. We have asked for $2.5 million in our FY '24 funding budget so that we can continue to focus on the traffic calming safety program. And we hope this year for our focus to be on traffic calming around school safety projects countywide to help us implement more safe course for the students around Baltimore County. We are also coordinating with Goucher College to connect the community with the college. This project includes an ADA sidewalk along Delaney Valley Road from Goucher to Southerly Road in order to connect the college, retirement community, and downtown Towson. Now, the Baltimore County Circulator is in its second year of service with just about 100,000 in ridership. We are also conducting feasibility studies to expand our circulator service in the Owens Mills area as well as Catansville.
These are taking over, whatever it is.
I was just last week presented with the options, preliminary options for our feasibility studies. We hope to go out to the community later this year to present those feasibility studies to the community and get some feedback on them for the Catansville and Owens Mills feasibility studies for circulator services. I'm also excited to say that our county ride Saturday service kicked off this past Saturday, as anticipated in this fiscal year. We were able to do 26 trips on this past Saturday. So I would say for our first Saturday of service, we were very successful and very excited. Our next phase of going into it, we hope to be able to do some dialysis trips. This Saturday, we did primarily grocery trips for our seniors in the county. So we were very happy to kick that service off this past Saturday. Our traffic inspection and sign shop converted over 850 signs and processed all traffic regulations associated with the implementation of our vehicle height monitoring program, which most of you all know also kicked off just last week successfully. We budgeted $2.2 million in FY '24 to help us with replacement signage around the county. Our Pikeville Walkability Study, as a result of the study, will be addressing some of the critical medium-long-term recommendations for sidewalk installation through our Highway Capital Improvement Project section. We will be piloting a street connectivity program project in FY '24, and it is budgeted at $2.6 million. We've identified a location in D-2 and D-4 at Oak Court Road from Liberty Road to Rice's Town Road. This project will be one of DPW's first projects that will focus on a complete streets concept. As we discuss the movement of people and goods, let's not forget about the inevitable byproduct of our daily lives handled by our solid waste department, our county's unsung heroes. Solid Waste has a number of capital projects at our solid waste facilities, including the Eastern Sanitary Landfill and the Central Acceptance Facility and the Western Acceptance Facility. We also have long-term projects at our closed landfills, which includes Parkton, Hermwood, and our Texas Closed Landfill. The Eastern Sanitary Landfill is the most intensive with several major capital projects being pursued in conjunction with $3.4 million budgeted in our FY '24 budget. Those capital projects include the construction of the Phase 13 line of system, installation of Phase 11 landfill gas collection, and ongoing improvements to the landfill gas collection system as a whole. The bureau is also pursuing long-term plans to finally connect the landfill to public water. At the Central and Western Acceptance Facilities, we have been doing site upgrades after years of limited facility improvements. This includes efforts to repair heavily damaged beams and columns and replace a scale house at the Western Acceptance Facility. Both Acceptance Facilities require paving each year to keep transfer operations moving. In FY '24, we budgeted $75,000 for Central and $0.5 million for Western. Closed landfills such as Hermwood and Parkton receive ongoing site maintenance and monitoring to ensure environmental compliance. From discussing the challenges of waste managing, let's pivot to uplifting and sustainable solutions presented by our newest department, our Green Infrastructure Department, a testament to our commitment to a healthier and more environmentally conscious future. Spawned out of the Storm Drainage Design Engineering Section, our newly created Green Infrastructure Design Group was initiated and funded in FY '23. Five positions were added, and three have been filled with two additional positions on track to be filled. The Green Infrastructure Design Section also inherited the regionally acclaimed and pioneer S-DAM system. This new assessment, too, is being tested on six pilot areas. These areas were mapped for existing stormwater infrastructure to determine its functionality and suitability for drainage. The pilot areas were chosen to represent diverse areas of the county, including coastal, riverine, and upland neighborhoods. Each of them will need different solutions to restore, supplement, and future-proof the existing drainage. The goal is to develop a toolbox for various conditions which can be used for similar areas. This approach allowed our engineers to complete the design and start the construction of green drainage solutions in Dundalk along Liberty Parkway, the first of its kind. This initiative will use the public right of way to store stormwater underground with native vegetation planted above. The project will greatly enhance the function of the seven-decades-old drainage system and will make it resilient in the face of the stronger storms that climate change brings upon us. More pleasant, better-looking, and greener neighborhoods are just the extras to initiatives such as this, and they all contribute to a better quality of life for our constituents. And so, as I conclude my presentation of our proposed budget, I want to leave you with this thought. The figures and the strategies we have discussed today are not simply numbers on the page or abstract concepts. Each line, each project, each initiative represents our unwavering commitment to the people of Baltimore County. These are investments in our shared future, a testament to our resolve to create a safer, more sustainable, and more posturous community. They speak to our goal of ensuring that every resident has access to clean water, safe roads, effective public transportation, and the reassurance that their county is working diligently to combat the effects of climate change. So as we look to the future, we pledge to continue to strive for excellence, to be innovative, and to ensure that every dollar we spend is a dollar invested in bettering what we do here in the county. We are dedicated to make changes, and we appreciate you all for listening to us today. I'll take any questions.
Well, thank you, Director Walker, for a very thorough and presentation. You certainly stepped the bar up with the video presentations, slideshows, and I think you are extremely thorough. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Marks?
Okay, thank you, Director Walker. Thank you for your presentation. I want to thank you for the Perry Hall Manor Sewer Project. I didn't hear much in your presentation for the Northeast, but that's a very big project that county executive supported. I want to give him credit on that, and you as well. You've been very helpful on that. I want to thank you for your notes about the Eastern Sanitary Landfill, for your work on traffic calming, the bicycle pedestrian activities. My very first bill created that bicycle pedestrian committee, and for your overall professionalism and responsiveness. You know what I'm going to ask you about, I think. Honey Go Boulevard Crossroad. This was the major initiative I asked for funding in the last year's budget. We have worked on this for 10 years. This county executive finally made it happen, and I'm very grateful for him listening to me. I also, like you, have served in the state government and in the transportation sector, and I know how long projects can take. It's just really frustrating to communicate to the public that it takes four years to build a traffic circle, four years. In those four years, we could have as many as 20 crashes if we look at the data from every year that we have this intersection. So I have three questions, and this is the only three questions I'm going to ask of you. Number one, are there some short-term solutions we can do before this traffic circle is finished? Number two, is this process the absolutely fastest way to complete a safety improvement project? And number three, is the delay at all due to the consultants, the contractors that we've hired?
So, in terms of, thank you so for your questions and your support. So let me start with the Honey Go and Crossroad circle is the largest circle we would be doing here in Baltimore County. And it doesn't have anything to do with the consultants. It has to do with a proper design and making sure that we have a proper design for this circle. So we have the consultant working on it. And then the likelihood is that we will have to do easements, and we may have to take some land in order to build out the traffic. we will have to do easements, and we may have to take some, some land in order to build out the traffic circle the way we need to build it out. So what we've done is we've included all of those timelines as a part of that. Now, I don't, I don't want it. I thought it was three years, not four. I don't want it to be three years. We get an update on it every other month to make sure that we're on target. But when you have to build a, a circle this large, you gotta make sure that we're building it right and engineering it properly, because if we don't, that's why I can't do it in-house. Typically, I can do some circles in-house if they are not that large. This one, I didn't feel comfortable doing in-house, so I have to give the consultant time to actually do it so that it's, it's safely done the right way, the design is done appropriately. And then, because there's going to be probably some, some easements that we'll have to do with real estate compliance, we also had to build that time in. And typically, when we have to do those, you don't have to build that timing. So you have to build time in to negotiate. But maybe when they design it, maybe they won't have to pull in, um, maybe they won't have to buy land from residents in order to build it out, and then it could construct it, uh, so that it doesn't have to be so long before we get it done. But this is the largest, uh, roundabout that we've done. Um, and w- we were being very cautious. I didn't feel comfortable doing it in-house. I wanted the expertise of a consultant to be able to do it. So in terms of short-term solutions, we could look at some short-term solutions. If there's a way to do some things, I'm committed to, to doing that, because the last thing that we want is additional deaths as well, or crashes, uh, in that area. Uh, so we will get transportation looking at that. And if there's a way to cut it down, cut down the time in order to do it without compromising safety, I'll be committed to do that as well.
Yeah, and by four years, I, I was referring to the fiscal year, so we funded it in, beginning with twenty-two, twenty-three, and I'm being told it could be finished, you know, twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, and, and this is not a criticism of you or the county executive. Um, like I said, the county executive followed through with me, and I very appreciate what he's doing. I just want you to understand the frustration I'm hearing from my constituents when they see nothing being done, even though it's all this background, you know, design work and such. Please do whatever you can to move this up, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, it's Wade.
Yes, Councilman Catch.
Yes, uh, Deandrea, I want to thank you for all that you and your department, all that you do, and, uh, I especially appreciate the openness and transparency, uh, of your agency. As I was listening to the many, uh, projects that you, uh, mentioned, uh, I think of, uh, the Lutherville Flooding Project, uh, I could assure you that ever since I was elected to the council, the community called me down, and, uh, I saw it, so thank you so much for listening. And of course, the Fox Chapel issue, if we had, if we let this problem uh, of the leaking water continue, I'm afraid that, uh, we would have, uh, more problems with, uh, uh, cavens of our grant, uh, of the property. I, uh, uh, with the soar issue, uh, along the Roland Run, I mean, I could go on and on and on. But, uh, you know, your department is definitely taking a look at those issues that have been a problem for a long time and are getting to them, and, uh, I appreciate it, and, uh, I, I know people think, well, you know, if the county's going to work on this, they'll have it done by tomorrow, but that's not very realistic, and, you know, I think people are, are pretty understanding. And, uh, I, uh, just thank you so much for your work and the work of your department, and especially the willingness to sit down with me, with constituents, and listen to what the problems are, and then, uh, solve them, what you are doing. And, uh, I appreciate it so much, and, uh, you'll be hearing from me later, okay?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I was, I do have my deputies in the room, too. They're in the conference room somewhere on here. Just in case we weren't able to answer some of your questions, we wanted to make sure we were able to answer them, so they are here. The team is here somewhere.
You lost them.
Well, uh, thank you so much, uh, Councilman Catch. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
That's Mr. Chair.
Councilman Batoka?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. Ms. Walker, I just want to compliment you on, uh, this, on your presentation. It was very good in describing the breadth and scope of DPWT, and I think it was helpful to all of us as this agency, uh, evolves, uh, from, uh, from, uh, classic DPW to also covering transportation. Also, I'm not going to, um, comment on any particular projects, but I want to also just commend you on uh, some, the methodical way that you have addressed solid waste, uh, since you walked through the door, and having a vision in mind and, you know, and, and achieving that mission, that vision. Uh, you know, solid waste is not a sexy vision, but it's something that we need to do as uh, a municipal, as a, as a, as a county, and something that, uh, is important to performing the nuts and bolts of government, well, so, well done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Batoka. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Well, Director Walker, again, I want to thank you so much for your hard work and dedication. Uh, excellent program, uh, very thorough. I think you raised the bar there. Uh, certainly appreciate all your work with transportation. Appreciate your, uh, I was excited to hear you train individuals and your staff to do some of the maintenance work, so we don't have to sub it out and, uh, spend so much money, so that was good. And everything else you're doing is just fantastic, so we appreciate it. You, you, you're batting a thousand by any measure, and we appreciate it very much. So if there is no additional questions, comments, like, any additional questions, comments before we adjourn? All right, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you all so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. All right.